This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:31 PM on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pekel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Anne Kramer. Ms. Kramer, will you please call the roll?
Director Barlow?
Here.
Treasurer Cook?
Here.
Director Ms. Lawson?
Here.
Clerk Marvin?
Here.
Chair Nathan?
Here.
Director Whitewarm?
Here.
Vice Chair Workman?
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Director Barlow moved and Director Workman seconded. It has been moved and seconded to improve the amended, the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amend, the agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/assembly. Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the Board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the School Board meeting. The form is available on the RPS website and the Assembly main page. Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to this table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to the Board. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the School Board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker tonight is Marie Fegjelum?
Fegjelum.
Fegjelum. Thank you. Our next item is Information and Outreach: Recognition National School Social Worker Week. Director Barlow?
Yes, it's my pleasure to read the following in terms of acknowledging our RPS social workers. National Social School Worker Week is being celebrated March 2nd through the 8th to celebrate the work of school social workers. All of our RPS schools have social workers on staff, and they affect the lives of their students in impactful ways every day, promoting student academic success by reducing social, emotional, economic, and environmental barriers to learning. RPS social workers work with students one-on-one, in small groups, or in the classroom to develop problem-solving, conflict resolution, and decision-making skills. They help students deal with difficult or crisis situations and improve interpersonal relationships with their peers. They help address barriers to school attendance and learning and are key to identification and early intervention for students who need mental health care. Finally, RPS social workers provide a link between school, home, and the community, connecting students and families to school and community-based resources for health, mental health, housing, food, and nutrition. We would like to express our thanks on behalf of the district to our RPS school social workers. And if there are any present, would you raise your hand so we can acknowledge you? Well, we'll do so anyway.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Okay. Our next item, 4.2, Board Member Updates. Does any Board member have updates from committees or any other items to share? Director Marvin?
Quickly, I was able to attend two events during the last couple of weeks. One at Century High School was a soul food gathering, and there were probably 60 or 80 students who gathered in the cafeteria. And in addition to sharing incredible food, they had some profound, intelligent, inspirational conversations about community, about race, about working together. And I have never been more hopeful about the kind of amazing students who are attending our schools and working together to help our community and our schools do better. And then also, there was a Sound of Gospel Music performance at Mayo Civic Center that was brought here by NAACP, Jackie Trotter in particular, Mayo Clinic, the City of Rochester, and a number of other community organizations. It was an amazing musical performance that told the history of gospel music through music. And at the end, Rochester students were onstage to a standing ovation. They were able to be involved in this as well, and it was just, it was inspirational. And I'm so proud that our community came together to bring this group here.
Director Workman?
Yeah, the Legislative Committee met with Senator Carla Nelson on February 25th, 2025. Our time was somewhat limited. That was also impacted by some technical difficulties, which fortunately, we were able to resolve. So some of the topics that we covered with her were PTAC, expansion of PTAC in Rochester, funding for PTAC, increasing the local optional revenue from 724 to 974 per pupil, provide to covering, to provide funding to cover state mandated costs of the Minnesota Unemployment Insurance and Paid Leave Programs, replace the high school MCA exams with the ACT. And she was very interested in that, in that most all students take the ACT, and I'm hoping to have further dialogue with her on that issue. One of the big issues was to amend the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act to authorize school districts and other units of local government to require the full legal name and address of individuals submitting requests for any number of reasons, including the fact that it takes a lot of time and effort to track down exactly where this information is coming from after we've spent a lot of time trying to research the information that they need to tell them how much it's going to cost. Eliminate all state requirements related to notice for remote School Board meeting participation. She was very unaware of this, which doesn't surprise me because she's not a School Board member, but School Board members are required to give three days' notice before they are going to miss a School Board meeting if they are going to participate in it, which means that if you feel well enough to participate but don't want to share your germs with everybody, you have to notify them, the Board, three days ahead of time. And then the other piece of that was that currently, we are required to provide the address of where we will be, and currently, it's supposed to be in a public place that's accessible to any member of the public to attend. So if somebody's on vacation in California, that information has to be out there because we know those Californians are really, really interested in Rochester Public School District meetings. And then finally, allow School Boards to establish a school calendar. So I think we had a very good and productive conversation with her, and we hope to continue these efforts in the future.
Well, some of you may know that there will be a snow day tomorrow. And, and I, I got a lot of emails, as I always do, from our students. I just wanted to choose one. This time, it's a young person at John Marshall High School, Hamza Al Zuhari, and this was entitled, "Roses Are Red." Hello, Dr. Pekel. I am Hamza, a junior at JM, and I decided to write you some poems. Roses are red, the temps are low. Cancel the schools because there is snow. It will be cold, out comes the ice wizard. The NWS says there's going to be a blizzard. I hope you enjoyed it. I'm not very good at poems. I am more of a speaker than a writer. Maybe I can work on my poems on a day off from school tomorrow. So, well done, Hamza. You got, you got a snow day for 17,300 days.
Well, let's get this meeting done so that we can go, I'll get home before the blizzard Our next item is our Consent Agenda items, 5.1 through 5.6. Would any Board member like any item removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Director Marvin moved and Director Barlow seconded. All those in favor of the Consent Agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Consent Agenda has been approved. Our topic, 6.1, is a focus topic, our Extracurricular Activities Update. Superintendent Pekel?
Thank you very much, Chair Marvin, actually, Chair Marvin, I'm in a time warp.
Yeah, come on, Urki.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. So we see Amy Ike, who's our Executive Director of Community Education and Partnerships, coming up, and three of our intrepid Activity Directors, Dan Kristoffer, Brian Urki, and David Perkins. Many of the items on our School Board agendas are tied to our strategic plan, or they're tied to requirements that the state asks us to meet, or School Board policy. And then some come from Board members. And this example is, this is an example of the latter. This is something that multiple Board members have asked for, which is really laying down the baseline for where we are today with our extracurricular activity strategies. And so we really are gonna try and succinctly make sure that the Board and then other folks who are watching gets a core briefing on the full suite of activities that we offer and some future directions. The one point I would just make, before I turn it over to the group, is that we talk a lot about whole-child education, and we talk about preparing kids for all of the skills they're going to need in the workforce tomorrow, not just their cognitive abilities that are intellectual, but their resilience, their relationship skills, their perseverance. And we know from a lot of research and from the lived experience of many of us, that many of those things are built through our extracurricular activities. Something I think that's underappreciated, American education, often deservedly, gets a lot of criticism when compared to other leading systems in the world. This is an area where I would submit, this is, we are the world leader in developing kids' capacities broadly through extracurriculars outside of school. Now, we don't have all of our kids participating, and I'm sure you'll hear about the priority that we want to place in Rochester on increasing the number and diversity of kids, but this is a critical piece of our educational mission. And so thank you to the four of you for putting together this initial discussion that I'm quite sure will be a continued focus of our work in the years ahead. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us out here tonight. It's always great to share the things that we do with all of you, so Dr. Pekel, Chair Nathan, and members of the Board. Thank you so much for having us out here tonight. Some of the things we're going to talk about tonight are ranging from activities, participation, and the members of our school community that do participate, economics, supports that we have in place to support our children, trends that are, that are coming to us and emerging rapidly, challenges we face in what the future will hold for, for our programs. In RPS, especially when we talk about the high school, we have 16 female In RPS, especially when we talk about the high school, we have sixteen female and fourteen male activities and three adapted activities that are co-ed. We have additional registered programs that compete through the Minnesota State High School League, which range from large and small group ensemble with music, fine arts as relates to our art classes and visual arts that our kids compete in at the high school league level, as well as speech and debate. We have many different registered clubs, and one of the things that we try to do at each school is if a kid has an idea for a club, we find a way to try to have it. So we really like working with our kids, and our staff members really step up to help advise with that.
And I would just add that community education gets into the game at the high school as well through our Twenty First Century Community Learning Center grant. And many of those ideas that kids have will come up through our enrichment programs. So if it doesn't end up as a high school club, it might end up as a Twenty First Century program at the high school.
All right, so we pulled the data from the 23-24 year. We have 5,029 participants. The total fee waived was 1,151, which is about 23 percent. Raise in ethnicity, black of 10 percent, Hispanic 8 percent, Asian, sorry, .2 percent, two or more, 8 percent, white at about 66 percent. Some of the activities that we do obviously offer, and you can see the list there, but a couple to highlight with that, our one-act play, our three-act play, science Olympiad. So myself out at Mayo High School, we just placed second in state with our science Olympiads. We have a number of different clubs that we offer, ranges from about forty-five to fifty clubs. Those clubs are approved at the administration of the schools. Some of the clubs that I can highlight tonight as well, we have a Muslim Club, Medical Club, Model UN Photography Ski Club, Spartan 300 at Mayo, Spanish-French, Art Advocate for Artists, Black Student Union, BPA Book Club, FCA Hiking, and that's just to name obviously a few of those. One that I really have a passion for as well, and we have it at both of them, but ours is called Supporting Our Spartans. That one is a place that they get clothes and gloves and whatever it may be to those that are underprivileged and need those essential items can go and get those.
Also, I just wanted to jump in real quick. There are some clubs that operate independently that aren't listed there, just come from a desire in the community to have these things, and so we partner with them to provide them. There are things like, we have a Nordic Ski. We have Mountain Biking Club. There's a figure skating and equestrian. So also some unique one-off activities that I think are very much unique to Rochester Public Schools.
And on the right side of the slide, you see the types of offerings that the students have asked for under the Twenty First Century program. And so we try to really find a home for anyone who's interested, really looking for student voice in determining the content of the clubs, and then we will work to find adult support to run the club. So really, the ideas come from the kids. Our drone clubs are probably our newest ones, and those definitely came out of the kids asking for that. And then, you know, our job is to find some supportive adults that have knowledge, background, but also are aware of that whole child piece to support. I'm gonna talk a little bit about middle school. We do most of the middle school programming. Years and years ago, before I was here, a major budget cut eliminated middle school sports. Some of you, I see Julie nodding, you remember that. And so we have tried to bring back some recreational sports under Twenty First Century. The grant-funded programs offer a wide range of enrichment that's designed to give kids lots of experiences. So it could be anything from recreational basketball to guitar to photography, you name it. What we haven't been able to do is really create a full-service competitive sports program replacing what was cut years ago. And so we have begun to talk a little bit about that. I'll talk about the key initiative around that area later on. But you can see that we do have some of our kids playing up in the high school sports. I think that came up in a board question, so we added that under the fourth bullet. A thousand forty middle schoolers play up into the high school sports. And then we do have seventh and eighth grade football that started a couple of years ago, and we supported that role. And actually, now I believe the high schools with booster clubs have kind of assumed that and then tracked as well. So we're edging back toward that, maybe too slowly, if given all the funds, we might need to do something like that, but we are moving in that direction. Our middle school participants, then, we had about fifteen hundred. About a thousand of those were specifically under the Twenty First Century grant, and then the balance of those would have been through other programs that run through community ed. You can see the, all the different titles going up the side of the screen, and the school breakdowns, and also the demographics of those students. Most of the Twenty First, well, in fact, all the Twenty First Century offerings are at no cost. That's one of the rules of the grant, that if you charge fees, your grant gets reduced by the amount of revenue that you bring in in fees. So it doesn't make any sense for us to reduce that grant that way. So we have a balance of Twenty First Century and some fee-based options.
Yeah, we'll jump in and talk about the economics and financial pieces for our activities programming. Looking and comparing what we have for our 24-25 school year as it compares to last year, being, keeping in mind that, you know, this year is not incomplete, obviously. Our total investment for this school year's budget to this point was 5.6 million. Last year was 5.2. The total revenue from this year is 1.7 right now. It was 2.3 million last year. Prior unspent, that's kind of referred to as, in layman's terms, would be like rollover money, money that was not spent the prior school year that we're able to take into the budget for the following year, was $931,496, with a net investment of 2.9 million from this school year thus far, and 2.8 million from last year. But that rollover funding, just be mindful, all of this is split between all three schools, obviously. This is the big bucket for the district-wide budget, and some of that, a significant proportion of that rollover money comes from activities and fundraising that activities do for themselves. So they'll either have their own booster club, or they will just, as a, for instance, our student government, when our student government does Bear Creek, they do a huge fundraiser for that. The athletic teams oftentimes have to fundraise to play for uniforms and things of that nature. And so that rollover funding gets grouped into that, those monies. So all of that doesn't come directly from district funds.
And you did have another document in Cindy that goes into detail behind the high school budgets. And then the grant side of the world, these are federal dollars that come through the state of Minnesota in a competitive grant. There's a different cohort, they call them, every three years or so. We are actually recipients of two of those simultaneously right now. Cohort eight will finish up this August. So we are actually right now in the process of writing for a cohort ten grant. Cohort nine will continue. We cover different schools with each of those cohorts. You can't cover the same after-school site in multiple cohorts. So you see down below which schools and which partners are paid for within each. So you can see the total grant award. We did put some extra money into the esports program this year and some other areas that went beyond our grant. So you see an additional community ed investment in cohort eight this year. So you have the available funds, and then we sub-grant out a portion of that to other organizations. And so you see the bottom line available for us, and that goes to the adults who work in the program as pay for those. It goes to supplies for the program, computers for the esports, drone parts for repairing, things like that.
RPS provides these supports to help participants experience success. Access, activities at school, buses for middle school athletes to the high schools, after-school activity buses for the middle schools, activity fees waived, no-cost activities with Twenty First Century grant funds. Health, there's referrals to low-cost or free physicals. We also have a partnership with Mayo Clinic for the athletic trainer services, which for myself is, I was the athletic trainer at Mayo High School for the last thirteen years, so I can obviously speak a little bit more upon that. It's a wonderful service. It provides athletes and even some of our teachers and staff in the buildings a resource for some of those injuries that they may occur. And really, what it does is they're able to evaluate those injuries, they're able to give advice on, you know, does it need to be seen by a physician? Does this need to be an emergency visit tonight or not? What type of rehab is it? Is this something that we're gonna send it to physical therapy? Or is this something that you could, you know, obviously, work with the athletic trainer at the site? So it really saves a lot of parents' money for not having to incur some of the costs of even going to see a physician, as well as physical therapy costs and so forth. Our athletic trainers have really become part of the school families and an integral part, I think, of the sport scene. So happy to obviously answer any more questions you may have on that partnership.
So we wanted to share a few of the trends that are coming up, and that first bullet is really in our Twenty First Century area. We're seeing a lot of growing interest in esports, drones, some cultural in heritage language programs. So offering a program that would have been in English in the past, but now offering it in the language, the students might be speaking at home or might speak as a second language. A lot of interest in beekeeping and pollinators as learning lots of science. We have a STEM mentoring program, which has really taken off at the middle school to intentionally involve graduate students at the Mayo Clinic and other professionals working in various STEM fields to work directly with our students. They work toward a project for the STEM fair, but they're meeting with them regularly over several months to build the relationship and also learn scientific method. And boxing is one of our newer, more popular ones.
Also jumping in with boys volleyball, which you guys had the pleasure of meeting with you last meeting, can say that we are having quite a few registrants with that, and so we're planning and going forward with that. So hopefully, a great success leading into boys volleyball. One bullet point we didn't have on there that adding in is girls wrestling. Girls wrestling has really exploded over the last couple of years. We saw, you know, quite a few, Brian was up at the state tournament, and we see a lot of success with obviously, girls wrestling moving forward. Girls flag football has been added as a club sport. The Vikings actually pay, I believe it's $12,000 for a startup cost, and that's for uniforms and to pay officials, and they're really promoting and pushing girls' flag football to become more prevalent across the country.
Some areas of concern, as it's listed, is related directly to number of participants and some activities we have. Gymnastics, all three of our high schools train together. We have, we train at one facility, we're at Frydell. We share coaches, and we share transportation. Every time we compete, we compete together but separate. So each team, you know, we score individually, but one of the reasons we're able to still make it work is because we are sharing the cost with having all three schools share coaches and transportation and officials and everything related to that. Our numbers are low, however, and, you know, we would like to see those numbers increase, but as kids come to us without much prior experience with gymnastics, then it's challenging to fill our teams, but we're working on that. Boys and girls hockey, as we know, it's on the forefront with low numbers in our community and across the state. So we're co-opt with JM and Century are co-opt in boys and girls hockey, and Mayo's numbers, you know, we're continuing to work on building them. Alpine Ski is similar to the same situation we had with gymnastics, where we share a coach, we share staff, and, but all three teams operate independently, and they compete together, but we share coaches and costs with that, too.
And Chair, we have two slides left. Would you like us to cover these quickly?
Cover them quickly, please.
Okay. We will do that. We did want to bring up a few of the challenges that we do face. As we mentioned earlier, the previous budget reductions are still affecting the middle school sports, so I won't say much more on that. Twenty First Century grant does require reapplication every few years, and it is highly competitive. Minnesota only has three and a half million dollars for the whole state going into this next cohort per year. And so we are likely to ask between 750 and a million for continuing our programs, and so you can tell that would not go very far across the whole state. One of the challenges we have is that time of day, recruiting, you know, high-quality adults to come and work with our kids during the after-school hours. That's not a new challenge, but it's one that we always, it does limit the pool from our total population down to people who can make time during that. And then managing the increasing wages without revenues rising, you know, if your grant stays the same every year and wages go up. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, we do have a key initiative in this area in middle school extracurriculars. So one of our early steps was to work with the Search Institute to do some, both literature review and to do some focus groups with students, parents, and staff, and to get a window into their experience. So we did both participants and non-participants to try and get both sides of that. While there were some challenges in getting enough people to participate in the focus groups, I think we did get a window into some experiences and some good recommendations. Of course, from the kids, we heard that having a friend in a program is, can make all the difference. That's not new to us, but they did recommend some ambassador-type programs where kids could help promote the activities. They gave us some good hints on communication, and then just some ongoing youth voice and parent voice opportunities. So that will all be worked into the initiative. And that concludes our prepared information. Be happy to entertain your questions.
Okay, thanks. Board members, any questions? Director Marvin?
Thank you so much. As you said, it's so important to have students, all students, hopefully. As you said, it's so important to have students, all students hopefully, involved in some sort of extracurricular activity. Could you tell me, for the 21st Century Grant programs, do they all have a paid advisor?
Most of the time. So sometimes you would get a volunteer who might come and run a program, but typically they're paid, either a district staff person or a community member who would come in.
Okay. And then when there is someone who is a volunteer, what responsibility does the district have in terms of legal responsibility?
Sure. Well, we provide quite a bit of training to mitigate legal risk with that. In the STEM mentorship program, for example, they get quite a bit of training on working with middle school students. So we know that's not always familiar to people when their career might be in a STEM area and not in education. We were talking as a group, too, that bringing more and more people in from outside of education does require, you know, training in youth development and all of that. We're certainly doing background checks as we normally would when we bring in a paid staff member. We would do that with volunteers. So we're trying to get them as ready as we can. Thank you.
Director Barlow.
Two observation points and one question. I had the opportunity maybe just over a month ago to part, to attend a middle school girls' volleyball tournament at Dakota, and I think that occurred as a result of the 21st Century Grant. Excellent, a lot of, well-attended, and just wanted to acknowledge that. Secondly, when you presented the information regarding high school athletic activities, total fee waivers, one thing stood out to me that runs contrary to, I think, what people tend to automatically assume as it relates specifically to, well, who, those students are getting the scholarships or the fee waivers? And I just found it interesting that 66% of the high school students who received the waivers were white, just something I kind of noted that you had noted, which I thought was significant, because it runs contrary, counter to the narrative that oftentimes is put into play. And I just wanted to, for whatever reason, bring out the light. And then finally, as relates to the 21st Century Grant, in that it does come from federal sources, in terms of planning, and I'm not asking you to look into a crystal ball.
Please do. We need one of those.
But there is a reality that that funding may not be available. So what are you anticipating? How long will we be able to ride the current funding cycle? It seems like it goes through next year?
August.
August, okay. And just wanted to hear what is being considered.
I think it is a crystal ball moment. We are all waiting, you know, for that same information to find out what's going to happen. It is federally managed, but given to the states then to do the local pieces. So the states do have the dollars for this fiscal year, so we're safe through August. It will be a major topic of conversation in the district and with community ed specifically on whether, how much of that we can replace. We do have some fund balance in community ed, so we could go for a period of time, but nowhere near the three to six years that a grant normally covers. So it would be a major loss to our district because this does create quite a bit of access for kids to get to activities without a fee.
Thank you.
Director McLaughlin.
I just want to clarify, taking off of Director Barlow's comments, I'm looking at the slide that has the participation. I want to make sure that we're looking at and talking about the same things, that there's a listing there under the high school athletics activities, participants 2020, oh, sorry, 5029, fee waivers is 1,151, 23%. The next data, though, is that participation data?
It is.
It's not fee waiver data?
Correct.
I want to make sure that I understood.
We do have that, however, so if the board's interested in that, we could give you the breakdown of those fee waivers.
And it might be helpful for future slides to make that a little bit more clear, is that's participation. And then my own separate questions. First of all, thank you for educating me about 21st Century activities. I can't believe that I've been on the board this long, not super-long, but anyway. I did not know what that was, and now I know, so thank you that this was helpful.
And not to be confusing, but there is a class called 21st Century in the middle schools.
Okay. Didn't know that either.
That is different.
Okay. I had heard the topic, but I didn't realize what was involved, and I love the fact that you've listed all of the activities on the slide because it is something that actually came up in some discussions of my reelection in the fall, that a lot of people were wondering about, particularly middle school sports, activities is a completely different thing that also the students don't pay for. That would be really important, I think, for us to be able to share with the community broadly, that I think that that was a question that I had a lot about, you know, what's going on with middle school and how to get them engaged. There's a whole list, so I have resources now. I am also interested, girls' flag football, I hadn't heard about that. Is that high school level?
Correct, yep.
Okay. All three high schools?
We've just started at Mayo High School this year. It was kind of late getting into things, but we're learning more about it and kind of what we can and can't do with it, but Mayo's going to try to run it this year and see kind of how it goes.
Is it a spring sport?
Correct.
Awesome. And then one of the other things, again, that came up when I was talking to voters this fall, and I apologize, I didn't realize this was on the agenda, so I'm all really interested in seeing this for the first time. The financial information that's attached as well, is there breakdown between how much is spent by the district between boys and girls' sports? I know that there's parity related to participation and offerings, but the question came up about, are we spending a lot more on boys' sports or girls' sports, or is that broken down and collected anywhere? Not that I want to put you on the spot for now, but in a future presentation, if that could be included.
We can get that data because everything's budgeted accordingly, but...
And it is broken down between...
Yes. We do an October report to the Department of Ed where we have to break down our spending per sport. So we do have that data that we can get to you.
If we do this again next year, that would be helpful, Dad. Thank you.
I think we can provide it to you in advance of that, just in writing. So thanks for helping me do that. That'd be great.
Director Cook.
So, yeah, a few thoughts, very important topic. Thank you for the presentation. I guess, I wanted to start just briefly, Dr. Bacall, the way you introduced this topic really resonated with me because reflecting back, and I'm sure this is true for many of us here, the number one, two, three, four, and five things I remember from high school were all extracurricular. And when we talked about deeper learning two years ago and how to bring about that synergy between creativity, mastery, and identity, it was always the extracurricular activities and the sports as well, you know, the potential for relationship building and leadership development and all of it, and just learning how to push yourself, you know? There's so much of identity that comes from discovering that you were capable of more than you thought, and sports can be a really potent way to learn that lesson. So, love this topic. I love that we're reaching as many students as we are. Partly, oh, and one other just observation, I wanted to underscore how wonderful I think it is that in this last cohort of the 21st Century Grant, we nearly doubled the amount of community partnerships or support for community partnerships. The students that we're reaching through the Sports Mentorship Academy and Pajoma Women and so many others are just a great use of our resources as a community and really a boon to our broader community. So I think that's very well done. But in the face of uncertainty related to that funding and unfortunately predictably funding in general, it's sort of like the game that we constantly play here, one thought that I've had a few times is whether there is a trade-off between the quantity of programs that are available. And I love that we embrace the spirit of trying to meet students' interests as they come to us and make available opportunities, you know, depending on students' initiatives. But is there a trade-off between the number of different programs that we're able to offer and the quality of the ones that we make available? And I'm not decided on this, but it's something that I've been kicking around in my own mind, and I wanted the opportunity to hear from others, whether in a scarce resource scenario, that is a trade-off that we are sensitive to or not? Or any observations you might have?
It's a good question. Let me follow up. So are you asking, if we continue to offer more, are we taking away from what we have? I don't think we are. Kind of getting back to what we fund per gender, we're going to give everything we have to make the program successful. And we really don't look at somebody going without to give to others. But we are mindful of that. I mean, that's a concern we have as we add things. We're always going to come and ask for more funding, but we're going to, it's a trend, right? But we're always going to try to work within our budget to make it a great experience that we can have, so. I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Well, I, no, you underscoreed that I didn't pose it very well at all. I guess...
Maybe I didn't understand.
What I, I think what I'm trying to ask is as between 100 different activities where we're able to cover as broad a possible set of interests of all the students in the school or 10 activities that we're able to do really well, and hopefully make them bigger and more opportunities for more students to join those 10 and find their spot within the 10. I'm purposely trying to not identify particular activities or sports, but do you think it's ever better to try to narrow the focus and make a lesser set of programs better in quality and perhaps in number of students that enroll?
My concern with that would be simply that, let's say we're going to do 10 things, we're going to do them really well. That may not spark somebody's interest, and some kids may drift away because they think they won't be able to be part of that program. For example, if we say we're going to get rid of boys cross-country so that, but we're going to really have boys soccer be successful, we can only carry so many soccer players. So that worries me that if we would limit it and try to do 10 things really well, that we would lose a lot of our kids. I think we would lose participants. I don't think we'd have as many participants as we have.
We also do take into consideration the long-term viability of sustainability when things are suggested to us in terms of taking on new activities. Is there a broad enough interest, not only within my particular building but district-wide, and then also we're part of a conference, right? So we have to take into consideration, what does that interest look like? Because if you want to do an activity, I'm speaking specifically in terms of athletics or any activity, like you want to compare yourself against your peers, well, if other communities don't offer that programming, then we're just kind of doing it in-house, and that only is going to satisfy students to a certain extent, right? So we do take long-term viability into consideration. Is there a feeder system that's going to continue to feed into this program that students in high school want to have so that it can be a long-term opportunity for students that come, that are coming, going to be coming into the system? So we do take those things into consideration, and sometimes the answer unfortunately is the sustainability is not viable enough for us to really invest in short term because we want things to be part of the system long-term.
And I think one thing that we offer in the school district is a unique atmosphere where we offer things that try to attract anyone, right? You know, I grew up in a small school district where you had this many activities, and if you didn't really, you know, that didn't speak to you, you didn't have anything else to do, right? So I think we're very competitive in all of our sports activities, but also, you know, our arts and our bands and so forth are thriving. And we have a lot of members with that, and I think, you know, just for Mayo alone, you know, we have over 200 band members and we had over 115 participate in the Fall Musical. And a lot of those individuals may not be in anything else.
Director Mc...
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and Director Cook, thank you for raising this question, just to the point that was just made. When I recommended that you endorse a co-op in boys' volleyball, there were two ways in which your point came into that decision. First, my first question for these folks is gym time. If we started out, can we actually, are we taking gym time from other sports? And the answer in that case, because we have the volleyball center, was no. But that would have been a hard issue if we were going to actually make the challenge of gym. The other is, to David's point, that's why we called it a three-year pilot. We have not committed to boys' volleyball yet in perpetuity, and I think there's a broader point here that is going to be very relevant to us in a school district with ambitious aspirations for kids and a tight financial environment and declining enrollment, which is that we do need to think about the viability of everything we offer. And that when school districts out of good intention subsidize classes, programs, and even schools that do not generate sufficient revenue to cover those costs, you cannibalize the quality of everything for everybody. But you also have to nurture things and grow them and give them a chance to take off. And so we do have to be prudent here in investing. When I bring to you a recommendation for a new world language next year, this is going to be a critical issue. We're going to have to invest in it before it has enough kids to cover our costs, to grow it, but that we have to have a mind for sufficient student participation to fund whatever that language might be. And I wanted an in-school curricular example. I think the same thing is true, and these folks do a great job of balancing that, but it's a really important point that if we do water down the support we give to a program out of a well-intentioned desire to subsidize something that simply doesn't have sufficient interest, that can be a recipe for a long-term diminishment of the quality. I'm confident that at this time we're balancing that well, but, you know, one of the questions we've tried to make a hallmark of these board presentations is we don't just do the good news, which is why I'm very glad they listed those three sports that we're concerned about here. And believe me, I know board members get emails about it and calls. All three of those sports have passionate supporters in students, parents, and coaches. So when we put those up there, if any of them are watching tonight, I'm sure they're not thrilled to see it, but we need to be honest that when it comes to, you know, hockey and gymnastics and some other areas that we didn't all get into tonight, we have to be mindful of that student issue. So I really appreciate the point because it's something we think about constantly across our work.
Director Workman.
So I have a question on the economic piece. You said that the state of Minnesota has $3 million for the next cohort. Three and a half million.
Well, per year.
Per year. So that's for the entire state? What was that amount for this year? Do you know?
I don't know.
I'm just trying to figure out how much I can compliment you on your grant writing and how much you actually got in terms of the...
It's incredible.
I know, it's incredible.
I don't know why more people don't object, but I'm glad they don't. Amy and the team have been incredibly successful.
And, I mean, I've made that observation for many years, having worked with some things on you, and it's just amazing, the work that you and your team do in service for our students, so thank you.
I think it's, just to give you an idea, the last go-round, they, I believe they were able to fund 14 proposals around the state. So if we ask for a third of the dollars, that tells you there's probably not room for 14 proposals. And we're not assuming we're going to get it either. It's highly competitive, but it is a small amount of money for the whole state.
Director Whiton.
So, thank everybody for all the wonderful questions. It's sent me a lot of talking. But what I am interested in is, we just kind of glanced over it, was like the volunteer training for community members. And to Director Cook's point of, you know, wanting to have quality programs, I do think that we have a good body of professionals here who could probably do some amazing things for children. things for children. But as you said, just because you're an amazing cook doesn't mean you know how to translate that into working with children and so forth. And I don't know if you, I know you said that they do do some training, but how is that communicated out to the community? Because I do know that we do have community members here that probably maybe do have the time, um, to do this, but I know some adults are hesitant that are not in the education field, you know, of teaching, right? Because they are not really sure what that all encompasses, um, and they have very valuable talents that would work great in that type of programming. Um, so I don't know if we've considered other ways to, um, bring that to the community and let them know that, that we do offer, you know, some training and some support, you know? And I think that would be some people's hesitancy in, um, doing community education, you know, programming because they hear teaching and they start thinking, well, curriculums and, you know, I have to know all this stuff about education where sometimes it's just, you know, guided help, you know, in a controlled setting. So, uh, is there a way that we can work with that as well? Because as, um, as we were talking about the budget, you know, we do have community members that may have the ability to volunteer or, you know, work for a very low stipend because they want to help, but there's that barrier between, I have this great knowledge, but I'm not a, a educator, so have we got a good...
I think we probably have room for improvement there on getting the word out. Typically, we find our volunteers through our connections in the community. So, when we were looking for STEM mentors, for example, going out through the businesses that hire a lot of STEM professionals, using our connections there to get the word out, um, through the colleges in the area, knowing there may be students interested in STEM. But I do think that's a fair point, that we could be more intentional about how we communicate the training.
And if I can be more specific, I'm thinking of, you know, our retirement, um, community, right? Because, you know, there are, we do have young retirees that, you know, IBM retirees, people who have a lot of great knowledge out there, but again, they, they're probably not in that immediate bucket of, you know, oh, they're currently working, but there are, we have, you know, a nice portion of our community with time on their hands that, you know, often approach us, you know, they want to help with kids, uh, but they may be a little hesitant about being, you know, over a program with children. So I think if we can find a way to communicate that out, especially to some of our retirees and things like that, you know, that community aspect would really help to build, uh, that program and maybe take some of that, that strain off.
So I'm wondering if, um, you talked about students sometimes who come to us in high school and they hadn't had experience, but we know we've got a robust recreational and youth leagues in a few sports. Um, how much do we work with each other? Because I can only think that increased participation at that youth and recreational level can only help the development of our high school sports participation. So, how does, how does that conversation happen? And I know those are volunteer-run and, and, you know, volunteer-led, but can you talk a little bit about those relationships?
Yeah. Well, I can start. Um, I know that, um, you know, some of our coaches reach out into those, those organizations and help with, with some of those. Um, i- i- it's really different, you know, compared to the, the different programs. Um, I know, um, with the youth football league, for example, um, you know, our, our coaches help out in the plays and everything else with that and mentoring those coaches as well. Um, so they're, you know, running the same offense, defense, and doing some of those type of things. Um, so I think there's some there. Um, I think there's more that probably needs to be done, um, and I think there's a two-way street there, right?
I think it's a great question. We, Dr. Pakel started talking about how great we are as a nation in, in our extracurriculars and our schools, especially public schools. Um, one of the barriers that we see, and I don't want it to be all about money, is youth sports are expensive. We've, across the board at all three of our schools, we, we have seen such an increase in boys and girls track. And sports where you didn't need to play the youth sport, but you could come and you, get you a pair of shoes and you can run and you can jump and you can throw something. Those sports are through the roof. But we have other sports where it's really tied to youth, that the youth numbers are actually low in our community as well. We go from, you know, Shaver Academy and Lourdes and our three public schools, um, to trying to have, uh, youth baseball and youth softball that are basically feeding one or two teams at that level, at the highest level, to feeding five high schools. So it, it is a challenge. Some of the things that we talked about, removing those barrier, barriers with community ed, um, things like basketball and volleyball that, that Amy highlighted already. But we do, we do work with our, our people all the time. They share our gyms, they, they, they get a very good rate to rent our gyms through, when they rent them through community ed. So we're, we are trying to form those relationships all the time and, and keep those strong, strong relationships.
Board members, any other questions, comments, compliments? Compliments abound. Good luck on the next grant cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for having us. Thanks for your time.
Our next agenda item is a monitoring item, Superintendent Golds for 2024-25 Mid-Year Progress Check. And this was the, uh, annually scheduled mid-year conversation that we re- we rescheduled here from our February eighteenth meeting.
I need the clicker.
Superintendent Pakel?
All right. Um, as board members are aware, in the framework that we use in Rochester for my goals and evaluations, which was developed jointly by our School Boards Association and our State Administrators Association, um, they recommend a mid-year conversation, which is intentionally not structured, um, but obviously around which I want to provide some reflections that hopefully can guide, uh, the conversation we're going to have tonight and I'm sure in the days and weeks following. Um, as that picture suggests, I really think I could characterize this year that we are in, in Rochester Public Schools as landing one plane and getting another one ready to take off. The current plane is our current strategic plan, which is in its final year, and the plane that's getting ready to take off is our series of initiatives that we have underway to prepare for the development of our next strategic plan. Really briefly, um, that plane that is landing, which is not yet completely landed, um, and the building blocks are not yet completely constructed, but I think we all should feel really good about what has been accomplished in the three-year life of this plan. To move really quickly, um, as Director Cook was just mentioning, our, our framework for deeper learning of mastery, identity, and creativity a moment ago, we have had teams for two years in every one of our schools not only, uh, define that framework with precision in terms of what it means, with curriculum, instruction, but create exemplars of deeper learning that I look forward to sharing with the board and our community at the end of the year. Um, in that building block and the second layer of multi-tiered systems of supports, we have implemented an entirely new literacy curriculum, which is not just our wit and wisdom curriculum, but multiple resources. We're giving frequent assessments at every level, including the high school level, and we're beginning to design interventions to support struggling readers. And our teachers and administrators have engaged in best-in-class professional development in literacy at every level. In mental health, we are screening hundreds of students and identifying, in particular, kids who are suffering from depression and anxiety, being the two big ones, and then some kids who are, uh, struggling with more serious challenges. And we've strengthened our partnerships with school-linked mental health providers that are supplementing the work that our staff does with, uh, treatment that we do not directly provide. In that building block, in the third, uh, tier of belonging and behavior, um, we have invested in relationships and are beginning to see, in particular in our middle schools and high schools, uh, students feeling more connected. We've put in place a new cellphone procedure that has, uh, helped, uh, young people, I think, both focus on learning and focus on each other. And then we've had certain schools like Willow Creek, where we've seen dramatic improvements in the degree to which kids feel safe and affirmed. And of course, Willow Creek, uh, is not unique in that regard, but it's one we've talked about a lot. In that middle building block of engaging parents and caregivers, we have first researched and then adopted a research-based framework for family engagement that comes out of, uh, a researcher named Karen Map at Harvard, where in the early stages of figuring out how to apply that framework through the work of family engagement liaisons. And we've launched our CAPE program, that's an intensive experience for families who really want to learn more about how to help their young people succeed in school. Then in that building block of establishing strategic partnerships, we've identified twenty key organizations in our community. And we have sought to make sure that not only do they understand what's happening in Rochester Public Schools, but that we understand what's happening in their organizations. And I think probably the marquee result of that commitment to strategic partnerships was the ten million dollar gift that Mayo Clinic, uh, gave this district at a very, very difficult time. That was the biggest, but by no means the only or necessarily even the most important of those community partnerships. And then when we move down to that fourth tier, we get to improving recruitment and retention. We have a, a striking number of what are often called Grow Your Own programs to bring talented, uh, dedicated people into our district whose, uh, backgrounds reflect our student community broadly. We are, uh, engaged in what we call our people strategy that is involved in changing how we hire, recruit, induct, and support, um, our staff. And also learn from, uh, what we didn't get right when they choose to leave us through, uh, a much enhanced approach to exit interviews. We get to that middle block where we look at our youth voice, um, while developing our leadership capacity. We have had fifty of our school principals go through Research-Based Leadership Academy. We've created a pathway program for people who are aspiring to be administrators, who are getting support and preparation in working toward their licensure, um, and readiness to be school leaders. In that bucket of youth voice and leadership, we have conducted efforts like our Perspectives Project to understand the perspectives of our students who have struggled academically and with behavior. And we, this year, are refocusing our student school board on providing this school board, the actual school board, and the central administration with critical insight on pressing issues like attendance, uh, and our cellphone procedure. In that building block, that's the final one there on the post-secondary pathways and careers, we have really empowered our school counselors, who have reinvested in the press professional framework for the American School Counselors Association. Um, they have, uh, begun creating a new curriculum from early childhood through the end of high school that's focused on helping kids develop the knowledge, skills, and habits they need for success after high school. And we've purchased a new software platform, Zello, that is being used in every school in the district now. And finally, on the bottom, uh, sphere, we, as board members well know, um, are in the midst of building out a new budget model and staffing model that, uh, is modifying our funding formulas and is intended to maintain consistency across the district while providing more flexibility, uh, at the site level. Um, when you shift over there and we get to that next restructuring school improvement, we are in the midst of the school continuous improvement plan process or skip one-point-o and are working through the details of two-point-o, which is on the horizon, starting the year after next and the next year as a transition year. Um, the school board has really led that building block at the middle about reviewing and revising policies for equity. Um, and our policy committee in particular, but also the full board, has been attentive to the needs of the kids and families that face the greatest barriers to success as we have revised our board policies. And then, we get to the building blocks that not very poetically was named redesigned transportation routes. And the big outcome there was, uh, putting in place new start times, which have shifted our youngest learners from starting at nine-thirty-five, when I got to Rochester, to starting at about eight AM, which is paying huge dividends, for dividends for their readiness to wake up and learn in school. And then finally, in that bucket of increasing philanthropic support, we have brought in more than seven million dollars in philanthropic support for our work and our students, not counting the ten million dollar gift from Mayo Clinic. So, that's kind of a whirlwind tour of that first plane that is, uh, beginning its descent. And here's a quick picture of the next efforts that are about where we're headed. As board members, uh, well know, you've approved the conceptual balanced budget model in January. We are now deeply engaged in refining that model, which you will, um, review and have an opportunity to approve in June. We are, uh, actually in, also very much the midst of the design process of the school improvement planning process, what we've been calling two-point-o, and, uh, taking a look at how we actually set that up to really make sure our improvement processes are grounded in both data and evidence and high-quality, uh, collaboration among the various stakeholders in our process. We are on the cusp later this month of kicking off the development of a new vision, mission, vision, and values, and ultimately a brand. We've selected an expert, uh, firm that has a lot of experience in that space, that will be leading the board and our cabinet folks and me through an initial, uh, process exercise to, uh, kick off an effort that will, uh, stretch through most of the end of twenty, remainder of twenty-twenty-five. And then, this summer, we'll start the analytic work on a new strategic plan, and that will go very public, um, with working groups and focus groups and surveys in the fall, with a hope for approval by the end of twenty-twenty-five, so that we'd be able to start twenty-twenty-six with a new strategy fully in place. So what are my goals for the current year? Um, the first, which we've been calling the leadership component, is that you would rate me as effective or highly effective on seventy-five percent of the, uh, goals and standards that are in the Minnesota School Boards Association and MASA framework. As board members know, it is a complex framework that we've used every year I've been here, and we've used the whole thing. There's a hundred and forty competencies, um, and we've talked about every one. And I'm going to give you a brief, um, overview right now in a moment of, of the, uh, one observation from each of the categories in the framework on how things are going for me, uh, this year. And then, the outcomes component this year, we have defined it in a way that actually is going to have a lot of data, but it's really one measure. We focused it on literacy and reading in particular, and we focused it on gains at the grade level, because in many ways, that's where the change is happening first. And we've said that the goal is that at least a third of the schools makes statistically significant gains in the aggregate achievement in reading of all students in at least one grade level on the twenty-twenty-five MCAs, which, uh, our students are starting to take now and will be taking over the next couple of months, uh, when compared to the scores on last year's comprehensive assessments. And so, that's our measure, uh, for this year. There's not a lot I can say about that outcomes component with the, the achievement gains, uh, in terms of exactly, uh, how it's going and the role I'm playing, in that, uh, we're very much in the midst of it and we'll see how it comes out. But let me make a brief comment on each of the eight categories that are in the MSBA leadership. Um, each of these eight categories has got five or six subcomponents, and if I tried to touch on each of them, we'd be here all night. So I'm, I'm picking and choosing one to just give you a sense and, and as Chair Nathan just mentioned, this is intended to be a conversation and not my formal evaluation. So in terms of governance, I really think that we are getting the balance between governance and management pretty much right. I think when you think about all of those issues that I just showed you on the arrow moving up, starting with the balanced budget model and going up to the strategic plan, you really are making the big decisions on all of them. But I feel that, uh, I have a very strong role in advising you on that and that you are taking the preparation and the work our staff is doing to support that very seriously. I think we do not feel micromanaged, uh, we don't feel that these efforts are, um, for lack of a better word, politicized, which does happen in organizations. Um, I also don't feel that we are encroaching on the strategic direction of the district. I really think you are making those big governance decisions, and on the whole, um, we're getting that balance right, which is, which is not easy. Um, uh, but I think that, uh, and it's something we always have to be vigilant about, but I think that it's something that, um, I feel really quite good about right now. And I don't take that for granted because I talk to superintendents who do not have that with their board regularly, who are told, I don't think this principle's working out, or I really don't think that curriculum is particularly effective, or I heard there was a problem, so I went over to that school to look into it myself. Those are real short, like near-term examples, uh, from districts that are not unlike ours. I hear from you about your concerns and issues, um, but I don't, uh, feel that I'm continually trying to, uh, draw a line between board leadership and management. But that's, as I've said a couple of times, that's fragile and we always need to be vigilant about that. I think it highlights the importance of the board's role in the design of the next strategic plan. As I hope my walk through the building blocks a moment ago illustrated, I take our strategic plan really seriously. And so when this board approves the next strategic plan, I'm going to see that as my marching orders for the next three years and I'm going to lead to that plan. So when we get ready in December of twenty-twenty-five to have you vote on that plan, that's the moment in many respects, besides hiring the superintendent, the other moment when the board really puts its marker down and says, that's what we want to see happen, let's go do it. So, the, the, the board's role in that strategic plan is... So the, the board's role in that strategic plan is so critical. I feel in the end, we all need to own that plan, but the board really does. Terms of finances, I haven't mentioned the referendum yet, but the referendum, which may seem ancient because so much has happened since then, but it was just this year. It was an extraordinary vote of confidence. It happened after the very painful defeat of the 2023 referendum. Everybody deserves credit for that in many respects, but I think that it was something that was huge. I know there's been questions in our community, well, why, if the referendum passed, do we see some schools needing to make adjustments next year? And why do we see some challenges in the out years? The short answer is declining enrollment and very tight state funding. But boy, if we did not have that $19.4 million, we would be cutting $20 million in June. And so while we face challenges, we should be incredibly grateful to our community for their investment in our kids. And we, we need to recognize where we would be had that not passed and also had the board not had the authority to renew the 2015 referendum. So in that sense, I think we can feel good, but we can't be complacent. And as you know, I'm going to bring you a long-term financial strategy, multi-year financial strategy, when we also bring you the budget for the '25, '26 school year that if approved, will guide the work that we do over the next three years in terms of our finances, just as the one you approved in 2022 will guide, has guided our recent work. On the community partnerships and community relationships piece, I would say for me, the referendum was actually a great way to reengage with a broader segment of our community. It, it really took me outside our schools in our district in a way that was ultimately, I think, really productive. The flip side of it was, I really wasn't in our schools in our district for four months. And so I am trying to really get back into schools. I'm meeting with people in each of our schools to hear what are their concerns and ideas. One of the, of course, challenges for me is there's only so many hours in the day. And so getting that balance right is a constant challenge. And of course, I'm grateful to Anne for the work she does in managing my calendar, which is a constantly shifting puzzle. So I would say it's that constant balance of internal and external. Right now, I'm way over on the internal. In the fall and through the winter, I was way over on the external. In a perfect world, there would be a better balance between the two. In terms of school district operations, one of the things that is on our board calendar, but I didn't list on the arrow going up because I don't think it's, it's quite in that category, are some facilities issues. We are going to be bringing you some recommendations for at least an initial round of facilities adjustments to address some concerns. The Fidel Building has come up tonight. I think that will be wave one. And then I think there'll be a second wave of some recommendations that would come to you one or two years subsequently that will really be informed by the design we adopt in the strategic plan. The types of program we want to offer need to reflect our space. The recommendations I'll bring you this spring will really reflect using the space we've got in the most efficient and cost-effective way that we can. We are certainly in that operations bucket, maintaining the commitment we made not to consider closing schools or major reductions in programs for at least the first five years after the following of the referendum. And so that's a commitment that we've made and that I'm confident we can keep. In terms of human resources, we've talked a lot about the People Strategy, which is really a multi-pronged effort that we're doing. And Carl Bachman's doing a great job doing that. One of the fun things for me, and of course, you saw the awarding of the first two at a board meeting, is we've created a Rochester Public Schools Greatest of All Time or GOAT awards. It is so rewarding to recognize people, thus far all staff, but now we're going to also do some community members and students with that little GOAT. And I hope it becomes a thing in RPS. My goal is not to make everyone who gets it cry, but I'm five for six so far. And so, and the sixth, actually, the teacher didn't cry, but her cooperating teacher cried. So I think that's like a half. I'm being flippant, but it's like recognizing our staff is actually something we can't do enough of. And I'm looking forward to broadening that to students and community members. An area that I and we are not yet addressing adequately is evaluation. We have a huge need to rethink evaluation. I would submit, and we've said this as a board and a superintendent, we need to think differently about my evaluation. I've learned from evaluation every year, but I've never felt the methodology we've used has fully aligned with our strategy. And I know that we have multiple staff groups in this district who've told me, from custodians to teachers to principals, that they don't get the kind of formative, actionable feedback through evaluation that makes them better. It's a huge capacity challenge, the ability. It takes a ton of time to do evaluation. And that's a need that, we've talked about it, and it's not adequately resourced at present. And it's one of those things that gnaws in the back of my head, is something we need to find ways to address. We're meeting legal requirements for evaluation, but we're talking about the kind of evaluation that really provides sometimes difficult, but ultimately really important feedback for improvement. In terms of teaching and learning, I am super excited to bring you a long-term curriculum plan that Chief Academic Officer Mona Perkins and her team have developed. And when I saw the first draft, I was like almost emotional about it because it is a multi-year plan in all of our major subject areas to be sure that we're equipping our, our students and of course, the teachers who teach them with the kind of best practice curricular resources that they deserve. Once again, the fact that the referendum included $1.2 million in sustained funding for curriculum upgrades doesn't cover all those costs, but it gives us a base for that, that we've been sorely lacking. So that is a really exciting next step that I really look forward to. And we have put that on the board agenda in the next couple of months. In terms of student support, the biggest thing that's been my focus has been the early work on attendance. And I have to say, and as, as you know, we, we made a cut and created a position that Angie McAndrews, former principal at Kellogg, now occupies. That work has been a go-slow-to-go-fast strategy. What we've discovered is there were so many processes and procedures simply for recording attendance that needed to be cleaned up that we're just now getting to the how are we going to improve attendance piece of the puzzle. This is not only within RPS, this also has been with the county, which has a huge role to play in truancy as well. So we definitely have laid some good groundwork. But if you look at, to use the term we've used, our key initiative in attendance, by mutual agreement, we are behind where I'd hoped we'd be because there simply was so much to learn and clean up in how kids were being, what, how schools were differentially defining attendance, which we've done a lot to clean up, and then how we were recording it and how we were notifying parents about it and how we were responding to county requests for truancy meetings. That the next wave is, what are we going to do about it? How are we going to equip our, our parents and caregivers and the students themselves with frankly, a needed message that attendance matters? And you know, Dr. Marvin and Mr. Ruffin were with me with our student school board last week. And they really said, oh yeah, you have to make the case that attendance matters. Kids do not wake up every day thinking getting to class. And what I told them, and if you're gone two days a month, the City of Minnesota considers you chronically absent. They were like, what? And I heard somebody in the back of them say, I think we're all chronically absent. So like the attendance piece is, I'm optimistic. And we know that one of the parts of our strategy going to forward is going to be a really strong focus on ninth grade. Because we know that first year of high school sets patterns for later in high school. And so there's some, there's some good research we can learn from on that. That doesn't mean we're not going to worry about elementary and middle and the rest of high school. But you know, as we often say, if everything is important, nothing's important. And so we do need to focus, and I think that ninth grade piece. And then the final point on that ethical and inclusive leadership, here are some of the points that are in the MSBA framework on that point. And I'm reading them because this is obviously a subject of huge conversation in our country today. Engaging diverse communities, interacting with staff, students, community, cultural competence, and equity plan implementation. Those are things that our State School Boards Association, our State Administrators Association many years ago, but still today, have said are fundamental for superintendent performance. It is very challenging to lead in that space right now, as you all know as well, as board members. The thing I think I want to say is the reason I'm confident about what we're doing in that area in Rochester Public Schools is cut, because what we have been doing for the last several years has always been about a common sense approach to students' academic success. We have not been ideologically driven on either side of the equation. And as this board knows, I've had people on both sides of that pretty mad at me at different times. And because we have been about the academic success of kids, but kids can't succeed academically in environments that are hostile to them and that don't send high expectations to them and that don't provide those messages. And we know that the research is conclusive that if a black student has a black teacher, the academic benefits are powerful and sustained. That's not questionable anymore. But we've taken a very pragmatic and common sense approach to these issues. And we have never undermined the ability of parents and guardians and other caregivers to be involved in their kid's education. And so when I issued a message that got some attention that said, we're going to stay the course, that was not an effort to sort of engage in the very difficult, I think the only word I can say is battles that are going on over DEI or diversity, equity, and inclusion statements at the national level. It was saying, I'm confident that what we've been doing is a common sense, pragmatic approach that's good for all of our kids. And that's why I'm confident that despite the huge issues that are happening all around us, we can keep going in Rochester because we've defined this as being about the academic success of all of our kids. And you don't get to academic success unless you are addressing the environment in which kids are learning. But that one's a tough one. And I will tell you, almost every week, when I walk in on a Monday and I think I know what the week is going to be, there's a surprise. And in the last year, that surprise more or more often than not, has involved one of these social issues. We have to be attentive to them, but we have to keep the main thing, the main thing, which is that agenda that we have for student learning. So I would say on balance, it's been a year where I feel pretty good about, you know, how things are going. And the final concluding point I would make, my single biggest challenge, and we've, I'll just, for those folks watching, the board has talked about this with me in my closed evaluations for the last several years, but I'll just say it publicly here. My biggest challenge as a leader is connecting the dots across all these efforts and making sure that we're not burning out the capacity of people with the ambitious nature of this agenda and making sure that what's happening, for instance, with principals and leadership development is connecting to what's happening with teachers and curriculum, is happening, is connecting to what's happening with family engagement. That it's not just a series of isolated, each individually good, but isolated initiatives, but that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And more than once, people say, well, can't what you really need is like a chief of staff who like runs and connects. Well, I think for a school district of our size, that would be very unorthodox. But I actually take the point, you know, in that sense. That would not be the fix. But that's my single biggest challenge as a leader, is that issue. And it, it plays itself out in big picture things like how do we launch wit and wisdom and have it fit with what we're doing around discipline at the elementary level? And then what about that science curriculum we also purchased? So it's staggering, these initiatives in, in some ways. And it's something that's a constant, you know, challenge and struggle that I think about. And it's probably the biggest area in which I have a sense of anxiety about how things are going so that the whole strategy is, is connected and coordinated. Because when it doesn't get that way, you start getting emails on it. Like that's where, when we have a decision that gets made and somebody wasn't talked to or, you know, some funds get spent and the implications weren't fully thought of, those are the bumps. I think we've gotten really good at quickly pausing and course correcting when those things happen. But I think one of my goals going forward is that we have fewer of those bumps because we have a strategy that is very well-coordinated across these, these areas and this complex work that we're doing. So Madam Chair, that is my stream of consciousness overview of kind of some things I'm thinking about as we are at this little bit past the midpoint of the year.
Okay, everybody take a deep breath. Board members, any observations, questions, responses? Dr. Cook?
I, I had an observation. I, well, let me just start by saying thank you very much for your leadership. I certainly, I've reflected many times since last November on how fortunate we are as a community to have decided together to support our schools because the decision space that we would have and the types of things that we'd be considering would be quite a lot different. And I think a lot of what enabled our community to reach that point was confidence in your leadership. So, so that, that's a, that's a great thing. The item I wanted to elaborate on or react to is related to what you described as the challenges of leading on topics related to DEI, given the current national political climate. I, I think your, your observations that common sense, pragmatic approaches to meet the needs of all students are sure to be timeless. It's hard to see how our community doesn't benefit from the success of students. I, I do think that to the extent there's a ideological basis to any of this that the, the board's view, or at least my view relates to, it's, it's sort of a rejection of seeing the world as a zero-sum game where the success of any given student necessarily means less success available for some other student. Or, or that the success of one part of our community, however you want to define it, means that other parts of our community are less successful. I certainly view the world as one in which everyone is enriched when people are successful and able to achieve their full potential. It leads to a greater environment of entrepreneurship, a more robust economy, greater availability of goods and services for everyone ultimately. And so I think leaning into a structure that does its very best to facilitate the success of the broadest set of students that we can muster is absolutely the right thing for our community. It's certainly what I think is in the best interest of our schools. And in my judgment, it seems to be the collective judgment of this board. So thank you for continuing to lead in that area in the way that you have.
Director Rickman?
What Director Cook said. I think, I thank you, I thank you for that. I don't really have much to add to it. One of the things I appreciate about your leadership is your willingness to be completely honest and truthful and to say, oops, we need to go back, we need to do this again. I think the community is becoming a little bit more accustomed to that. I hope they are, and that when we make correctional courses, it's not because we're flopping, it's because we have more and better information to help us with our decision-making. And I really appreciate, appreciate the information that you bring to the board to make our decision-making easier.
Director McLaughlin?
I also echo Director Cook's comments that I think it's so critical in this climate to stand strong on those issues, and I can't overstate that. I also think that your work in the communication and community relationships aspect of passing the referendum was critical, that I'm not sure that that would have been successful without your leadership and so much effort that I saw every day. So I appreciate that. The other thing I want to comment on is the ethical and inclusive leadership. I think back to your first review. And I don't think you ever would have said anything like that your first year about having a big, your biggest leadership challenge. Those words would not have come out of your mouth. So I appreciate that growth and that not only that can you say that now, but that it sounds like you're really doing some really deep, deep thinking on that. And I think that that's for the betterment of your leadership, the board, and the district.
Director Marvin?
I think someone should say something negative, but I can't think of anything negative to say. So just in exactly what you said. Dr. Pecail, when you came into this district, you were laser-focused on what do kids need? And I can't think of anybody who has kept us more focused on listening to voices that are talking about what do I as an adult need? But you kept bringing us back to what do our kids need? And how can we give everything we can to them? I also appreciate you going over the strategic plan because they're not just Legos. And I think it's important for the district to hear it. We don't have just great posters. You're getting things done. You're getting things done. The cabinet, this district is really getting things done, and I appreciate the specificity that you listed a few of the initiatives in each of those that have been accomplished and we're continuing to focus on.
And if I could just add to that briefly, also no holes in that Lego structure.
Director Whitmer.
Everybody spoke so elegantly. That was so, so nice. A lot of big words used tonight. What I want to say, what I took away, as the newest member here, so I haven't worked with you all quite as long as everyone else has, but have had a relationship with most everyone here at some point, and I appreciate those, and I appreciate the transparency of those relationships. What I do want to say, what stood out to me in all that you were saying, was again that you pointed out some of the challenges, but just not for yourself, but what you did glance on was the evaluations portion. So I do hope that's something that we do look into, because I think that's a powerful statement, when someone who is being evaluated is saying that our evaluations are not robust enough. And who wants to be evaluated? Because I would have been fine with just whatever the standard thing was, if it said I was doing good, but he wants more stuff. So I do think that there is some power in that feedback, that, you know, that you're stating that the evaluation process needs to be a little bit more critical, even though we have wonderful things to say, but in order to grow, a productive, positive criticism is a very valuable key, if we're really looking to produce changes, and for everyone. So I do appreciate that point, that you picked up the challenges and brought to point that we needed to be a little more critical. But you guys all did use beautiful words, very big words, very elegant. I like it. Good job.
So, the superintendent is very aware that I'm a list keeper. So are you, the rest of you. So are the rest of you. And I remember that when we presented this strategic plan originally, we kept hearing the word, oh, it's ambitious, but it wasn't a good word, because we had people warning us, this is a lot, this is too much, and it's because they've never seen our district do this before. We've had lists before, but as Director McLaughlin said, there's no holds in what we're accomplishing in this list, where there were definitely holds in our ambitious plans in the past. And I appreciate your ability to keep everything on track, all the balls in the air, while at the same time recognizing that you're not doing it alone. And in our conversations, when you're telling us about the projects and the programs, you're always talking about the people, whether it's your cabinet, or the principals, or the teachers and the staff. You've empowered them to come along on this wild hair ride, and build not just their investment in this plan, but their own personal development, and their own feeling of success that they can all share, because they're all contributing to, you know, everything that you've talked about tonight, and I appreciate that kind of leadership.
Director Brathman.
Just a quick thank you. I liked the illustration of the plane landing and taking off. I just returned yesterday from Florida, and it's nice to take off and land. With that being said, I appreciate the indicators of where we're headed, and I think our community can benefit from knowing next steps, if you will. And I would just encourage you, and I'm sure it's part of your overall plan, to ensure that everyone who desires to be a part of this takeoff will be afforded an opportunity to at least minimally know there's a seat on the plane for you, okay? And everyone's, everyone has value. I don't know how we can communicate that any better than perhaps communicating that, but maybe demonstrating that. And I know you have done a lot of work in trying to model that, and yet I think it's been shared earlier that there's still work to be done, and I appreciate that. I'll be around at least for the next four years to see that that work is done.
Well, thank you, board members, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, board members, we're moving on to our prep for action and action categories. Are we okay with just planning ahead, or does anybody need a break?
Let's go for it.
Let's go for it. All right. So our next item, eight point one, is our policy committee recommendations from our February meeting. The policy committee met on February 20th and proposes the following recommendations, and just a reminder that this is the first of two briefings, before the policies will be on the consent agenda on the April 8th meeting. There were some questions submitted by board members before the meeting, and the answers to those are in the agenda item, if anyone would like to refer to them, but we will do our usual run-through of the policy and the changes. Director Workman.
Yeah, so I will start. The purpose of policy 503, student attendance, is to encourage regular school attendance. It is intended to be positive and not punitive. The 2024 MSBA model policy changes included in this draft are due to new laws. The RPS attendance options redesign changes are also reflected in the draft. These procedures, 503.0A for student attendance, outline the protocol for addressing student absences. This draft procedure is updated to reflect current practice. The purpose of policy 503R1 is to define the age eligibility of kindergarten students. The recommendation is to rescind this policy, because this content is covered in policy 607 and 513. If the board votes to rescind policy 503R1, the recommendation is to move procedure 503R1.A, which includes the draft changes, to a new procedure to be numbered 513A, which contains the policy language related to this procedure. I hope everybody got that. The only changes in this procedure are nomenclature.
Thank you. And before I read the next few, I just, I want to thank Chair Nathan and Vice Chair Workman, who have done a lot of work in looking at the policies, including renumbering them. So, this report has a lot of numbers, there won't be a test that are being changed around, but just to assure the public, all the board members, and the public for that matter, have access to all these policies, procedures, including the changes. And the policies state what the district thinks should happen, what the outcomes are, what we want to do. The procedures are how that's going to happen. I'm sure that people care a lot about that. So, policy 503R2, again, there's not going to be a test. Policy involving attendance areas, it ensures equal educational opportunities for all students during periods of growth in various attendance areas within the district. This is a policy specific to Rochester Public Schools. We recommend that it be renumbered as policy 503R1, attendance areas. If the board rescinds the current policy, 503R1, again, it's age of entrance to school. Then, policy 503.03, this policy is about exception to attendance, transfer, and placement. It establishes guidelines under which a student may attend a school outside of their legal and physical residence, attendance area. Again, this is only an RPS policy. The updates reflect the implementation of the attendance options redesign, and a recommendation to change the title to attendance options. Then, procedure 503R3.A, we recommend rescinding this procedure, which is RPS only. It duplicates the language already in another policy, exception to attendance, transfer, and placement.
And thank you, Director Marvin, for trying to explain the number change.
I didn't do it well.
You did do it well. And, board members, I think we're going to see a few more of these number changes that we've been waiting to implement as part of moving to Symbli, but the R that you're seeing in these policies, we're hoping to use to reflect that it's an RPS-only policy, as opposed to an MSBA model policy, so it will be much easier to see which are being generated from statute or MSBA versus the policies that we choose to have ourselves. So that's what we're trying to evolve to. No Rs in these policies, however. Policy 625, animals in the classroom, is to allow animals in the classroom while providing for the health and safety of school staff, students, and animals. This is the three-year review for this policy. The changes in the policy provide guidance for those with sensitivities to animals. Procedure 625A is also under a three-year review, and the recommendation is to include forms 625B and 625C as attachments in procedure 625A, so that we don't have multiple procedures for this policy. Procedure 625B is also part of the three-year review, and we're recommending rescinding it, because the form will be included in a single procedure, and that is the same case as procedure 625C. Policy 625.O1 is service animals in the schools, and this is another RPS-only policy. The purpose of this policy is to establish parameters for the use of service animals by students, employees, and visitors within school buildings and on school grounds. When we developed this policy, there was not an MSBA model policy, but now there is. So the recommendation is to change the language, the nomenclature, to policy 535, and use the MSBA model policy language, and renumber it in order to make future changes in statute and policy easier to track and update. The facilities naming policy is a new policy, and the purpose of this policy is to provide some guidelines for the naming of a new site, individual rooms, areas, media centers, gymnasiums, auditoriums, athletic fields, or facilities within or on a district site. We've had a lot of requests for naming different parts of buildings after different people, and the policy committee felt very strongly that we really needed to have some direction on this, to make the superintendent's job much easier for implementation.
Although we don't have a draft policy that we're bringing to the board yet, on that one. That will be forthcoming. Any questions, board members, now that we've gone through all that?
Remember, you have two other opportunities to do it, so don't, you know, do it all at once. Hearing none, we'll bring it back at the next meeting. If you have any questions in the interim, please feel free to pose them. Our next item is 9.1, Longfellow Flexible Learning Year Application and Calendar 2025-26. This is an action item, and I'll read the resolution, and we'll ask for a motion and second, and we can move on to discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the Flexible Learning Year, FLY, application for Longfellow Elementary for the 2025-2026, 2026-2027, and 2027-2028 school years, as well as the calendar for the 2025-2026 school year.
Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has been approved. Our second action item tonight are another set of policy committee recommendations on policy 522, Title IX Sex Nondiscrimination. The policy committee met on February 20th and proposed the following recommendation to the board. The source of changes to this policy are federal regulations, and it came to us as recommended MSBA model policy changes. Policy 208 allows the board to approve changes at a single board meeting, because the source of changes to the policy are federal, are changes in federal law. So this appears on this meeting's agenda as an action item. So I will read the resolution and ask for a motion and second, and we can move to discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the recommendations of the policy committee for the policies and procedures listed. Policy 522, Title IX Sex Nondiscrimination.
Move approval?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions? Director Marvin.
Just a point, this specific policy is, deals with the fact that you don't discriminate. That's it, and that harassment is not okay regardless.
Right.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yes.
And it's the law.
And it reverts back to the version of the policy that we had prior to our approval of the 2024 regulations. Hearing no other questions or comments, all those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution has been approved. Under other business, our ABCD is updated. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? I'll give a little preview, we're going to get an updated ABCD probably by the next meeting, because the superintendent has done some significant work to implement all of those things that he said we're taking off on, into some revised scheduling in our ABCD, so that's exciting. Our upcoming board meeting dates, March 18th at 5:30 is a regular meeting, March 25th at 5:30 is a study session, April 8th at 5:30 is a regular meeting, April 15th at 5:30 is a study session, and April 22nd at 5:30 is a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:30, 6:00 p.m.